Good evening and welcome to the July 18th meeting of the San Bruno Planning Commission. Roll call, please.
Chair Calleal.
Present.
Vice Chair Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Biassoti. Commissioner Legacy.
Present.
Commissioner Lethan.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson. And Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
Would Commissioner Peterson please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 6th, 2017 meeting.
Through the chair, I move we approve the minute.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Thank you. Item number two, communications. Mr. Waldering.
Chair Calleal, I've got a couple of communications tonight. First, I'd like to welcome our two new planning commissioners. The city council has selected two new commissioners to join us. We have tonight with us Commissioner Sophie Legacy and Commissioner Kelly Lethan. Both commissioners have been sworn in by our city clerk. Both commissioners have gone through their orientation and both commissioners are now ready to serve, so welcome. I'd also like to point out that tonight, our executive assistant from the Community Development Department, Madeline Lopez, is joining us to take minutes tonight here at our meeting. And Madeline, along with our senior planner, Michael Smith, put together the handbooks before you at the dais tonight, the San Bruno Planning Commissioners Handbook. We put these together, and I thank Madeline for helping us do that, to use for orientation for the two new commissioners, but we've also put them at the dais for all the commissioners to use. These handbooks provide quite a bit of information in terms of topics such as what is the role of the planning commissioner, the planning commission bylaws, a guide to local planning, terms that are typically used in planning conversations, the ABCs of open government laws, Robert's Rules of Order, ethics, composition and function of the planning commission, and skills that you might want to think about in terms of developing your skills, your personal skills, as a planning commissioner for the city of San Bruno. So, I hope you all can use this, it's a great resource, and it's a binder, so over time as you gather more information, you know, please add to it. That concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldering. On behalf of the commission, thank you, Ms. Lopez, for this lovely handbook, it's going to be very, very useful for us. And also, on behalf of the commission, I would like to heartily welcome Commissioner Lethan and Commissioner Lagasse, they are long-term residents of San Bruno, and I know they're going to make a fantastic contribution. We look forward to working with you.
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the new commissioners, and I remember very well being a new commissioner.
Can you get your lights on?
Okay. I remember very well being a new commissioner some years ago, and one of the things I found to be extremely valuable is Planning Commissioners Handbook, but probably as important would be the annual Planning Commissioners Conference. So if you can just think ahead, I don't, it's usually around spring, isn't it?
That's correct.
Right. I, I'm going to encourage staff to find budget for every new planning commissioner to be able to go to that conference if they can make it, simply because it's such a valuable resource. You'll, you'll meet planning commissioners from all over the state, and they have a great program. So, again, welcome to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, public comments on items not on the agenda. We are not able to directly address items not on the agenda, and individuals who wish to comment may be allowed at three minutes and groups five. Number four, announcement of conflicts of interest. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest tonight? Commissioner Lethan.
Through the chair. I have a conflict for item A, I reside within the radius.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't believe I reside within the radius of any of these projects.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, we'll move on then to item number 5A. Commissioner Lethan, you are excused, and we'll begin with our staff report.
Thank you, and good evening. Item 5A is 601 Acacia Avenue. The applicant has applied for a use permit to expand the existing residence by more than 50 percent. Specifically, a 1,290 square foot expansion, second story expansion to an existing single story home is proposed. The site is located on the corner, is a corner lot between Acacia Avenue and Canes Avenue. The total lot area is 5,400 square feet, and it's currently developed with a one-story single-family dwelling consisting of 962 square feet of living area with two bedrooms, one bathroom, a living room, dining room, and a kitchen. Additionally, there's a, an attached two-car garage measuring 553 square feet. As indicated, the applicant is applying for a use permit to expand the existing residence by 1,290 square feet. This would be a second story addition consisting of three bedrooms and three bathrooms and an entertainment room. The ground floor would also be modified to accommodate a new living room and stairwell that would connect the existing first-floor living area with the proposed second-floor living area. If approved and constructed, this would be a four-bedroom, four-bathroom home with 2,252 square feet of living area and a 553 square foot two-car garage. The project was reviewed by the Architecture Review Committee at their March 16th, 2017 meeting. At that meeting, the Architecture Review Committee had specific recommendations. Those recommendations included making modifications to the plans so that they were more legible, and the applicant has done so. Additionally, the committee recommended that the applicant incorporate a window or architectural feature located along the south side elevation. The applicant has addressed this comment by incorporating a new window along the south side elevation at the first floor level. Lastly, the Architecture Review Committee recommended that the applicant provide a new landscaping plan that incorporates drought-tolerant landscaping. A revised landscaping plan was not included with this submittal. Staff requested a revised landscaping plan, however, the applicant expressed an interest in moving the project forward with the current landscaping plan. The applicant's preference is to retain the existing lawn within the front setback area. Overall, the project does meet our floor area, lot coverage, setback, and height requirements that are outlined within the R1 zoning district. A use permit is simply required here as the project would expand the existing residence by more than 50 percent. Staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the design and scale of the surrounding neighborhood, which primarily consists of one-story, single-family homes with some split level and two-story homes as well. We also find that the proposal is consistent with the residential design guidelines, specifically the applicant is, or proposing fiber cement horizontal siding, which is consistent with the existing single-family dwelling. The second floor is also set back from the first floor along the northern elevation and a portion of the eastern elevation. I'd also like to point out, one of the, one of the biggest changes here is not only the second story expansion, but the wraparound porch that is proposed. And this wraparound porch really accomplishes two things, it, it provides an additional outdoor usable area, plus it also provides a visual break between the first and second floor living areas and overall mass, and helps reduce the overall mass of the structure. Staff, staff actually noticed all property owners within 300 feet of the site. No comments were received as of the writing of this report. Staff supports the project and would recommend that the planning commissioner approve the plans subject to findings 1 through 6 and conditions of approval 1 through 24. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any clarifying questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No, I did not have any questions, it was pretty clear.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Would you like to step forward and tell us about your project?
Yeah, we would just like to add on, I got two daughters, they both need a room, so that's about it. I grew up here, lived here a long time, still live here, I guess, parents still live here, so, don't want to move, so the only thing we can do is just change the house.
Any questions for the applicant from the commission?
Yeah, I'm just sorry you didn't catch your, your name?
Gonnick.
Thank you.
I think we did revise the landscape plan just a little from the last time. I believe we did.
Through the chair, if there could be clarification from Mr. Trahan, as far as the landscape plan, our understanding is that there have been some minor modifications, but as far as the staff recommendation for installation of drought-tolerant landscaping in the front yard area, Mr. Trahan has indicated, I believe, that he would prefer to retain lawn versus install drought-tolerant landscaping. So, if you could, if we could get clarification on that, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Waldering. Mr. Trahan, is that your position?
Yeah, I mean, we had lawn, and then we did add drought-resistant plants, and I think the lawn, the front yard's broken up into three areas. One of the areas next to 681 Acacia, we just said, it's the small part, so we just added mulch, because that's drought-resistant, I guess, and it would just kind of be off to the side. Everywhere else, I think we added more drought-resistant plants to the front, and still maintaining a little bit of lawn. It is 2,700 square feet of lawn, so that's why, you know, and it is a corner, so people do cut the corner when they're walking, their dogs or themselves, bikes, so they will just ride right across, so for, to, you know, put something like, you know, plants or whatever, I don't want to see tire marks or whatever all over the front.
Are those changes that you noted, indicated on your landscape and irrigation plan at A 2.8?
It should be, I, that's the plans I gave.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? No? Thank you very much, sir. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard on this issue? Please step forward. Good evening, please tell us your name and...
My name is Hamid Shahna, sir. I live at 10, 10-11, I, I own the 10-11 Canes, I used to live for 15 years there, and forgive me if my questions are not technical, I'm neither an architect or, or, you know, any legal background. I was on travel for several weeks, and I got back just last week, and I got the notice, and that's why I'm here, to maybe ask some questions and clarify some things. I'm very glad that the neighborhood is expanding and allows for more families to move in, so I'm glad that you are, you are doing this. And a few questions that I have is that, from the, from what I have received, and I have forwarded this to my architect and to clarify things, but in the meantime, are there any windows facing...
The north side?
North side.
Oh, excuse me, I'd just like to remind everyone that all comments should go through the chair and through the committee.
Right, yeah, sure. So are there any windows facing 10-11 Canes?
I'm, I'm sorry, so you wanted to know about windows?
Right, yeah, so because from, from what I see here, I, there's not enough information.
Mr. Waldering, perhaps you could clarify the plans that he's received or his question?
Chair Calleal.
Chair Calleal, it may be helpful if the gentleman could go through his series of questions, and we could write those down, and then we could respond to his full list of questions, and perhaps even enlist the assistance of the applicant as well, but let's get the full list of questions, please.
If that's what you prefer, yes.
Okay, so, and the second question is, has there been any light and shadow study as to how this affects, you know, my house on, on the other side? Also, right now, I have a tenant in my unit, so it would be nice to know what would be the plan for construction, how long it would take, and how would that affect my tenant, very nice lady with a son, and I hate to lose her. And this, I was looking at the, at the plans, and I noticed that the building is on the second floor. Is there, the envelope of the foundation is being changed, moving to, towards my unit or towards back, or is it just being built on top of the current foundation with additional fortification of the foundation?
Sir, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, and also, is there any, just to make sure the privacy is kept, because I, I see that there is a porch in the background, and I do not know how, if, if that porch comes up a little bit or not. I think currently, right now, the fence between the two units is about four or five, maybe five feet, if I'm not mistaken. So, is there any visibility, is there any planting of trees that would be on the other side that would give us some privacy in that case? Also, these plans doesn't show if there's any balcony or not, and if there is one, where is that balcony and which house it faces?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Waldering.
Chair Calleal, if I could, I'll go through some of these and enlist the assistance of our associate planner, Matt Neubauer, and also the applicant, the property owner.
Would you mind stepping forward again, sir? Thank you.
So, that's the north side?
Excuse me, sir, we'll let staff, and then we can turn to you as well.
So again, through the chair, in terms of windows facing 10-11 Canes, if the property owner, the applicant, could respond to that, I would appreciate it.
So on that side, there is no windows?
No windows facing 10-11 Canes.
Next question had to do with a light and shadow study. We don't typically require light and shadow studies here in San Bruno. We do, though, have design guidelines and standards that applicants must follow in terms of their roof designs and setbacks, and articulation to address issues having to do with shadows and, and impacts, visual impacts onto adjoining properties. My understanding is our staff has reviewed this application, and, and reviewed it against the residential design guidelines that are in place. The proposed project is in conformance with our residential design guidelines. As far as the construction period, when we issue a building permit, we do have regular inspections, we do require that applicants move forward with their construction plans in a timely manner. I would, though, again, ask the chair to speak to the, the applicant about his plans in terms of moving forward from the entitlement, should it be granted tonight, to pulling a building permit, and what's his expectation in terms of the construction period. Again, when the building permit is pulled, there are time requirements for performing, but we don't know exactly when the gentleman will move forward to a building permit stage, and maybe you could ask him about that.
Of course. What is your estimated timeline if we do approve the application today?
What's the, what's the minimum, six months to two years, right? A year?
Through the chair, it's one year, so the, the applicant would have one year to vest the approval, should it be given tonight, so within a one-year period, the applicant would need to pull a building permit.
I suppose the question would be, do you intend to proceed immediately and promptly with the construction? Were you planning...
I would, yeah, I would hope to at least get a weatherproof before the, if the rains come, so hopefully before December, but...
And about how long do you estimate construction's going to take?
Six months to a year. It's, it's a big project, I, you know...
All right, we had a question number five regarding the porch in the background and privacy and visibility issues.
And another question had to do with, is there a change to the foundation or footprint?
Yes.
It's a second story addition, as I understand it. In consultation with the associate planner, we don't expect that there would be a change to the footprint or foundation. There's another question regarding a balcony, and I'm going to defer to the associate planner and/or the, the applicant on that.
Based on the plans that have been submitted for staff review, there does not appear to be any second-story balconies that are proposed. There is a wraparound porch that faces the east elevation and south side elevation, but that is at ground floor level, so we wouldn't anticipate any privacy impacts associated with that wraparound porch.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much. Does anyone else from the public have anything they wish to say? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move it back to the planning commission. And this would be a great opportunity to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones, we are being recorded and broadcast. We're going to come back to the planning commission, commissioners.
Well, if there's any questions, I'll make a motion that we approve use permit 15-013 based on findings 1 through 6, subject to conditions of approval 1 through 25.
I only see 24 conditions.
That is correct.
Through the chair, I would agree with Commissioner Peterson. In the introduction to the staff report, it does indicate 1 through 25. The actual condition numbers, it's 1 through 24, so Vice Chair Chase, if you would amend for conditions 1 through 24, I think we would be in line with the staff report, please.
Of course, done.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Passes, there is a 10-day appellate period before you can begin. Thank you. All right, Madeline, or sorry, Mr. Neubauer, would you mind, or Mr. Waldering, would you mind retrieving Commissioner Lethan for me? Thank you so much. All right, we'll move along to the next item on the agenda, item 5B, which is 165 Linden Avenue.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda is 165 Linden Avenue, and the applicant is requesting a use permit as they are proposing a 447 square foot addition that would exceed the maximum permitted floor area threshold. A use permit is also required because the proposed 447 square foot addition, when combined with a 2015 addition, would cumulatively expand the residence by more than 50 percent. The subject site is located on the west side of Linden Avenue between San Felipe and San Lucia Avenue. The lot is 2,500 square feet in total area, and is currently developed with a one-story single-family dwelling. The existing single-family dwelling contains 1,019 square feet of living area, and there's two bedrooms, and two bedrooms, two bathrooms, a living room, dining room, and a kitchen on site. Additionally, there's an attached 266 square foot one-car garage. As indicated, the applicant is proposing a 447 square foot first and second story addition to an existing single-story home. The second story would amount to 419 square feet, and would contain one new bedroom and one new bathroom. The first floor would be expanded slightly by 28 square feet, and would accommodate a new stairwell that would connect the existing first-floor living area with the proposed second-floor living area. If approved and constructed, this would be a three-bedroom, three-bathroom home with 1,467 square feet of living area and a 266 square foot one-car garage. The Architecture Review Committee reviewed the project at their June 15th, 2017 meeting, and forwarded the project to the planning commission with a few recommendations. The first recommendation was to modify the second-story windows along the right side elevation by incorporating a sill height that is greater than five feet in total height, or by incorporating obscured glass. The applicant has elected to modify the plans and incorporated a window with a sill height that is five feet above floor level. Additionally, the Architecture Review Committee requested that the, a revision to the second-story windows along the front elevation so that they are more symmetrical, and the applicant has updated the front elevation accordingly. Lastly, there was a recommendation to incorporate a roof line that relates to the existing roof line of the floor below, found on the existing single-family home, and again, the applicant has updated the plans to incorporate a consistent roof line. I would like to point out that the proposal meets the lot coverage setback and height requirements of the R1 zoning district. Staff does find that the proposal complies with our residential design guidelines, specifically fiber cement horizontal siding is proposed for the addition, which would match the existing single-family home. I would also like to point out that this addition, second story, it's a second story addition amounting to 419 square feet, but it's located 48 feet back from the first floor below along the front elevation, so it won't be readily visible from street view. An architectural band is also proposed along, between the first and second story elevation along the sides and along the rear elevation. Helps break up the wall, provides a little bit more architectural interest as well. As indicated, the roof lines of the second floor that's being proposed matches the roof line of the existing single-family home, and all windows would incorporate wood window trim, it would match throughout all exterior elevations. Staff noticed all property owners within 300 feet of the site, and we did not receive any comments from members of the public. Staff supports the project and would recommend that the planning commission approve the use permit request, subject to findings 1 through 6, and conditions of approval 1 through 26. This concludes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time?
Through the chair.
Mr. Chase.
Matt, on the cover sheet of our report from you guys, it says, the maximum permitted FAR is .66, and they're going to .69, but then on the chart it shows .58, so I was just kind of wondering which one is correct.
Correct. That's a good catch. The chart is accurate, so the maximum permitted floor area threshold is .55, and the applicant is proposing a .58 FAR.
Okay. And then just so that I'm clear, it's only 60 feet over the square footage for the lot coverage, is that correct as well?
For lot coverage...
The zoning requirement is 1320 and the proposing 1380? Two lines up on the same chart.
Let's see. Yes, it appears based on this, this chart that they would also be exceeding the, the lot coverage threshold of 44 percent.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear, that I was going, thank you.
Anything else for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'm trying to figure out this calculation on lot coverage, it says, under zoning requirements, 1320 square feet is 52.8 percent, and then under proposed, it says 1380 is 50... Oh, I got you, sorry, not reading right. Excuse me, scratch your question.
Anything else for staff at this time? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Would you like to step forward and tell us a little bit about your project?
My name is Abe Sade, 165 Linden Avenue. We purchased a house three, about three years ago. It was a little 600 square foot home, so we decided to make it bigger. We did a addition about a year and a half ago towards the back, and we built the foundation for two stories and that kind of thing, in case we ever did want to go up. And that's basically what we want to do. Right now, we have a kitchen, you walk into the house, there's a family room, the kitchen, and then the back bedroom, and it goes into the backyard. We kind of just want to leave it, I mean, there's only two of us living there, me and my, my wife, and we want to kind of have it more to where we can just walk into the backyard and not go through our bedroom. So, we decided to go up, which, that's what we want to do, so. There's another bedroom that's going to be down below as well, that's existing, where the stairwell is, we're just going to use that as a little den office and kind of just flow with the house to the backyard and have our bedroom upstairs, so.
Any questions for the applicant? See, none, any members from the public wishing to be heard on this item? All right, we're going to go ahead...
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you. We're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Well, no other questions, um, I will make a motion that we approve use permit 16-018 I will make a motion that we approve use permit sixteen dash zero one eight based on findings of fact one through six and conditions of approval one through twenty-six. I hope those are the right numbers, right?
I think it is this time.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The use permit is granted, there is a ten-day appellate period. Thank you. All right. Moving along to item five C, two eighty-nine Florida Avenue. Staff report, please.
For two eighty-nine Florida Avenue, the request is for a use permit to legalize an unpermitted two hundred twelve square foot addition and eighty-two square foot covered porch and laundry facility to an existing, single-family home with no off-street covered parking spaces. So, for this project, for the legalization of the laundry room in addition, there's currently an open code enforcement case on the property. It was opened in August 2016. The purpose of the code enforcement case was that there was a laundry room vent, that an adjacent neighbor had a concern regarding the, the potential improper venting of the laundry room, and also, upon further, upon a further site visit from code, the code enforcement staff, discovered that the vent was uncovered, which rendered it out of compliance with the 2016 mechanical code. Additionally, when staff did research on the property, we found that there, there was a use permit that was issued for a similar type of addition in the rear of the home back in nineteen ninety-seven, which was approved by the Planning Commission, but building, the building permit was never applied for, for the project, and construction moved forward without proper building permit. So, the purpose of this project is to address a concern regarding the laundry room vent and also to legalize the addition to the property, which is going before the Planning Commission again, given the fact that there's an addition and there's no covered parking onsite. It's a two thousand square foot lot with one legal bedroom, one legal bathroom, five hundred nineteen square feet, and the addition proposed would include one bedroom and one bathroom, two hundred twelve square feet, and eighty-two square feet of an attached porch and laundry facility. Couple other points on this project. Staff has worked with the applicant to ensure that the site meets the required amount of landscaping onsite, so as part of this proposal, as you'll notice on your landscaping plan attached to your set of plans, the applicant is being required by a recommendation from the Community Development Director and from, and confirmed by the Architecture Review Committee to provide forty percent pervious surface minimum within the front setback area, and by removing a concrete slab in the front and replacing it with landscaping, they will be able to achieve that number. And in addition, this, the applicant had worked with staff to provide additional landscaping on the rest of the site to enable it to meet the minimum fifteen percent landscaping requirements and twenty percent pervious surface requirements required for that district. Additionally, staff had required the applicant to move their shed approximately one foot from the property line so that it complies with the California Building Code and the city's municipal code, and the applicant is working with staff on, on bringing that shed into compliance as well. There were public comments received at the Architecture Review Committee meeting from an adjacent neighbor regarding the vent location, and with this plan set, the owner decided to move forward with the vent in its existing location, although at the Architecture Review Committee hearing, the commissioners had indicated a stronger preference in order of achieving the goal of working with the neighbor, rerouting the vent to a different location. The owner worked with staff by providing a vent cover that met the California Mechanical Code to be able to retain the vent in its current location, and the chief building official for the building department confirmed via an email that that was sufficient via the photo that was submitted and is included in your staff report and consistent with the 2016 mechanical code. This concludes my staff report and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have a question, Madam Chair. The, the paved area in the, in the front, I wasn't clear, is it used currently as an ad hoc parking space or additional parking?
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a great question. So, actually, the sidewalk doesn't currently contain a curb cut, so there's no potential for any parking onsite.
Any other questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'd like to ask staff a question. I was looking at that vent design, and I wondered, is there a potential for lint to build up at that screen on the vent and potentially cause a fire?
Through the chair, we'd be happy to respond. As the planner indicated in his report, this matter has been reviewed by our chief building official, and our chief building official did look at the vent cover. It complies with code requirements.
Thank you.
Anything else for staff? Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing right now. Is the applicant here? Please step forward and tell us a bit about your project.
This is Sandra Menendez, the owner of the house. My name is Roberto Borja, the engineer who signed the plans. We only want to emphasize that by code, the vent should be minimum at three feet from the property line. That vent is located four feet, ten inches from the property line. I would like just to clarify that, that it has almost five feet from the property line to the vent.
Any question? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's it.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard? Please step forward. Please state your name and let us know where you.
Yes, this is Raina Burgos, and we are the next-door neighbors. And, Mr. Woldring, you said that this already, this vent is already being approved and reviewed and approved already?
Excuse me, ma'am, if you could address questions to the committee.
Okay, so, basically, as you can see on page twelve, the vent obviously took pictures, and it's easily removed, and the complaint persists. Every time the neighbor learns that we in the backyard, that vent is removed. That's why we were actually addressing this issue at the first meeting. And so, no, I mean, basically, code enforcement or the commissioners don't have the resources all the time to come and supervise when the neighbor uses the dryer, and it basically impacts our health. So, we actually believe that it was a decision to be repositioned or relocated, and it has to be reviewed because this cannot continue. As you can see, it's easily removed, and that's what the neighbor does. So, they, basically, the issue persists. And you, I mean, you, you need to help us. Of course, I see the picture here. It's easy, with a screwdriver, anyone can remove this, as you can see that, and that was our concern. So, I would like this to be remedied once.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If I could comment on the statement that was made, as far as that vent cover, what we've indicated is that that vent cover, as located and presented, complies with code, with the California Building Code Mechanical Section. We assume that that cover would be in place and not removed. That cover, as presented, does meet code requirements. So, from a staff perspective, as far as relocating the venting, unless the property owner would agree voluntarily to do that, we would not recommend requiring that. If the property owner would voluntarily do that, that would be fine. However, what's been presented meets code. We would certainly hope that that property owner would place the cover on that vent and maintain it in that position to address the neighbor's concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woldring. We'll just very briefly ask the applicant to step forward one last time, very quickly. Thank you so much. If you don't mind, if you could clarify your position regarding moving the vent, are you willing to move the vent or do you wish to keep it where it is?
I would like to keep it as it is, as, as the engineer said, and he also replied for me, thank you, I don't intend to move, I've never removed the cover. At one point, perhaps, it was broken, I replaced it, but every time that I use my dryer, that cap is what it is, in place, and emits everything. It is four feet, ten inches from it. I don't use it every weekend. I use it at the most twice a month, sometimes even once a month.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment on this issue? Please step forward and state your name.
My name is Tim O'Brien. I'm the neighbor. At the last meeting about the vent, we had a commission meeting about two eighty-nine Florida, the vent, the commission, I think, probably, I don't know, most of them, recommended that the neighbor relocate the vent. As a good neighbor, relocate the vent. Highly recommended. I think Mr. Peterson was one of them that recommended it, and I think that should be doing. I mean, the neighbor has a problem with the cover. It was off for like a year or so, and it was just, you know, wasn't even, you know, an issue with her, but it was with us. So, there's an issue there. So, I think it should be relocated as soon as possible, and furthermore, it should not, if she's going to operate the dryer, she should not be able to use the dryer where the location of the vent is now. Okay? And also, as far as the, the shed in the back, it's not in compliance, it's seven inches away from the fence, and it should be moved as soon as possible for safety reasons to meet code. And also, the front of the house, the construction that's going to go on in the landscape, we're concerned with the construction, and as far as it being a clean and cut job, so it does not interfere with our living conditions in our house. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Mr. Jones, just to confirm with you very quickly, what is the status? You mentioned that staff was working to deal with the shed issue. Can you update me slightly as to what's going on with that?
Based on the plans before us, it indicates that the shed is one foot from the rear property line, and staff's going to work to ensure that that is indeed prior to a building permit final, the, indeed, final location of the shed.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? Anyone else?
One question.
Commissioner Peterson.
Question of staff. What is the time, the, what is the time when the city will inspect the job to see if the vent is in the position specified on the plans and in the condition specified of the plans? When will that happen?
Typically, in a case like this, as the applicant moves forward with an application for a building permit, is issued a building permit, goes through inspections, and then is ready for final. During the construction process, we'll check to make sure that the vent is properly placed and secured, and that'll be part of the final inspection. That's, that's standard.
So, how would a member of the public find out when that final inspection is?
At this point, we don't know exactly when the property owner is going to go forward. We don't know the outcome yet of, of your action tonight, but beyond that, if you approve this, we're not quite sure when the applicant will come forward with a building permit and go through our construction period. I would offer this, that we've got two issues here, and we have a, a concerned neighbor. I gave you what's typical, but in this circumstance, we've got an existing condition, as I understand it, and we have two situations. We have a shed that may be less than a foot from the property line, and we have a venting issue that's of concern. So, we would normally look at those, as I mentioned, through the construction period as a building permit is issued, and at final inspection, make sure that both are in compliance. I think, though, that in a circumstance like this where we have a complaint, our, our staff can go out and work with the property owner. It seems like the property owner is indicating that they're willing to make sure that the shed is a foot off the property line and that they are wanting to maintain the vent where it is, and they acknowledge that there's a requirement to properly cover that vent, so our staff can go out in the near term and, and check both conditions, distance from property line of the shed and the, and the vent, to make sure that both are properly addressed. I'll say separate from the building permit application, just to make sure that those are done in any case.
That's great. I, I was just trying to figure out, if I were the neighbor, how would I know that the construction was done at the end of construction? The construction was done so that from that point on, you could presume the vents in the right place?
Through the, through the chair. I would think that the neighbor would notice that the construction period is over. The, the fact that a final inspection would have occurred is public information, so the...
By the, by the building permit number?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else from the public wishing to be heard? Please step forward.
I just asked Sandra, the owner of the house, that because the vent issue, she's willing to let anybody from the city, the, the department enforcers, if they can check tomorrow, if they want, yeah, she's willing to open the house and be inspected. The vent is already there, it's been there since, since she bought the house sixteen years ago, so the cap is there, so if that's an issue, she's willing to open her house and be inspected, the vent, at this moment.
Mr. Woldring.
Through the chair. Given that offer, we'll have staff contact the, the applicant and arrange for a time that's convenient for our staff to come by, go by, and check the vent, and also measure the distance from property line to shed, and work with the, the property owner, the applicant, to assure that those two matters are properly addressed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment? Ma'am, if you don't mind keeping your comments brief, we have already heard from you before.
Okay, I have photos of when the vent was removed, and it's been removed, and I show in the last meeting to the three of you that you heard our complaint, and it seemed like code enforcement or the Planning Commission have approved what the vent is, and I have no problem, it's never been an issue, but until the neighbor removed the cover, it became an issue, and it helped. and a health issue. That's why I need this, we need the vent to be relocated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And we'll take this back to the commissioners. Commissioners.
Any questions? No, I'm going to make a motion. If you don't mind, one more. I will make a motion that we approve use permit 17-002 based on findings of fact 1 through 6. Subject to conditions of approval 1 through 20. And also, then keeping in mind that the applicant has offered for city staff, whatever, to go in there and, you know, inspect it, make sure everything's good at any time. So, you know, I think it's pertinent. So that's the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The permit is approved. There is a 10-day appellate period. Thank you very much. All right. Our last item on the agenda, 5D, 1723 Park Avenue. Staff report, please.
Thank you. For 1723 Park Avenue, the request is for a use permit to allow construction of a second-story addition, an expansion of an existing substandard garage to a two-car garage, which increases the gross floor area of the existing home by greater than 50%, a total of 66%. And to exceed the maximum permitted floor area ratio of .55 with a .591 FAR. For this project, the existing square footage of the home is, existing square footage of the lot is 5,748 square feet. It's a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath home in 1,860 square feet of living area and 130 square feet of non-conforming garage area. The owners proposing to basically change the architectural style of the home from a ranch-style home, which is typical in the neighborhood, to something that's more along the lines of a Spanish Mediterranean-style home. The proposed exterior materials include Spanish clay tile roofing, stucco siding to match the existing metal balconies, and a cedar wood garage door, which would be recessed approximately 14 inches. And staff's found that with our analysis of the residential design guidelines, that this project conforms to the residential design guidelines. And furthermore, staff did receive some public comments in advance of the project and during the Architecture Review Committee hearing, specifically regarding the massing, the design of the rear gate. Commissioners and staff addressed these concerns. They also had some concerns about an accessory dwelling unit that was proposed for the home. So just going to kind of walk through some of those comments and staff's analysis. So as I mentioned earlier, staff has analyzed the project with its consistency to the residential design guidelines and has found that it conforms to those design guidelines. Also found that the architect, Van Lee, who worked on the project, ensured that it met the daylight plain requirements that are outlined in the residential design guidelines, which addresses some of the concerns from the public regarding the FAR exceeding the maximum permitted .55. Additionally, regarding the comments about the accessory dwelling unit, the accessory dwelling unit was, staff found a non-conforming second dwelling unit that existed in the home per site visit when we were analyzing the project. It was legalized per an accessory dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit permit that's consistent with local and state guidelines. It's located within the rear right side of the home. It's an internal conversion. Staff approved the permit on May 22, 2017. And attached standard conditions of approval, including a condition that requires the homeowner to live inside the property, which is standard for all property owners that pursue an accessory dwelling unit. It needs to be filed with the assessor's office, and they need to sign a declaration of deed restriction. So this ensures that the owner intends to move back into the home. And that's the purpose of this project. And so actually, as you'll notice with the project, they're planning on reducing the number of bedrooms to two-bedrooms, two-bath. And they had, have clearly intended at the Architecture Review Committee hearing that they intend to live in the home and that they would not rent it out. And that was another concern from some of the neighbors. Just wanted to also point out again that the project would take a non-conforming garage situation where not even one vehicle can park there currently, expand that into what is now living area, and turn it into a two-car garage. So it would address parking and traffic concerns that one of the neighbors had brought up to the counter earlier this week. So I believe overall, staff finds that, given that the commissioners and staff have already addressed public comments in the Architecture Review Committee hearing process, and that staff finds that this project conforms with the residential design guidelines, that staff recommends approval for the project based on analysis found in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to step forward?
I'm sent to the commission. My name is Van Lee, and I am the project architect. I am surprised my client is not here. They supposed to be here. The project is a pretty simple second-floor, second-story addition.
Excuse me, through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Could I ask you to start over and possibly speak just a little louder? It's hard for me to hear, and I want to hear you.
Okay. Is it better now?
That's a little better, thank you.
Oh, thank you. My name is Van Lee. I am the project architect. And I am surprised that my client is not here. They went to the last hearing. But today must be something wrong, because I called them, and there's no response. I hope them will. The project itself is a second-story addition. And as the staff report, we extend the existing half-car garage into a two-car garage. And then we do some additional on the first floor. And then the main project is to add the second floor. Along the way of processing that, then we found the illegal unit at the back. And then we legalizing it into the current approved ADU, secondary unit. My client, they, as the property owner, they base in San Francisco. But about, I would say about a decade ago, they retired. They moved to Mexico for retirement. But currently, all the children are grown up here. So they plan to move back. And so they will live in the main unit of this building. And then the secondary unit is currently occupied by a son.
Occupied by?
By their son.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Staff did a pretty thorough report, so I'm ready to answer if you have any question.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you. And seeing no members of the public left to comment, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Through the chair. Since there's nobody to question left here, so...
Oh, I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I believe you were present at the Architectural Review Committee?
I was, as was Commissioner Chase and Commissioner Beazley.
Okay. Was there discussion of the style of the house? It seems to me to be very different from what's around it.
That was the substance of the discussion in the Architecture Review Committee, amongst other things. I don't have the ARC Review Committee notes with me at the moment. But, Mr. Jones, I believe we did discuss the style. Do you mind just refreshing my recollection as to our conclusions?
I believe the discussion from some of the neighbors was similar in that the style of the home is different than the surrounding, than a lot of the homes in the surrounding neighborhood. But I believe the commissioners had discussed that the style of the home was consistent with the residential design guidelines. And in staff report analysis, we had indicated that it draws from certain materials from the surrounding neighborhood. For example, on Cedar Mills Lane, some of those newer constructed, newly constructed homes have Spanish-style roofing, as one example.
Anyone else on the commission?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
I'd like to ask the applicant, the commission, applicant a question. I think your architecture looks very nice. And I wanted to ask, when this construction is undertaken, of course, the second floor is going to be new. But will the finish on the walls there, will it match the finish on the first floor?
Yes.
And it's stucco?
Stucco, yes.
Okay.
Most likely, they're going to repaint the whole houses so make sure the color does not look different.
Thank you.
Anything else from the commission?
Through the chair.
Mr. Chase.
I'm going to make my next recommendation of, what am I making here?
You're making a motion.
Thank you. I'm making a motion that we approve use permit 16-021 based on findings of fact 1 through 6. Conditions of approval 1 through 23. And I believe that's it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining.
I abstain.
Thank you very much.
All right. The permit is approved. You have a 10-day appellate period. Thank you very much. All right. We are back to item 6A, City Staff Discussion. We need to pick some Architecture Review Committee members for August 10.
Yes. Chair Kayal, if you could help us find three volunteers for the next Architecture Review Committee meeting on August 10. I would appreciate it. We need three volunteers.
I will happily volunteer myself.
Oh, I'll happily volunteer right next to you. That's, it'll be next to your last one, won't it?
It will actually be my last ARC review.
I'm happy to volunteer.
Great, thank you.
All right, we have three committee members.
Should we have a standby in case? In case I can't make it for any unknown reason?
I can act as a standby.
Okay.
Perfect. All right, we have a full Architectural Review Committee and an alternate. That's fantastic. Anything else under City Staff Discussion?
No other discussion items tonight, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything under Planning Commission discussion?
Through the chair.
Commissioner Peterson.
Members of the public have contacted me to ask about the car dealership, Victory. I'm told that they believe they're not in compliance with the permit. And it's taking a lot of time with relatively little results. I was hoping the staff could possibly report on the status and if they believe that possibly full compliance has recently been obtained.
Through the chair, and responding to Commissioner Peterson's request for information, we continue to work with Victory Honda in terms of complaints we receive. And both our planning staff and code enforcement staff go out to this location on a regular basis on a variety of issues. One of the issues we're dealing with is that vendors, Federal Express and other vendors, park in our red zones. So there are issues. They have posted at Victory Honda that vendors should not park in these locations. But that continues to be an issue that we work with them on. There's also a matter of their car alarms going off. That's another issue that we deal with. So we do get complaints. We are working with Victory Honda to comply with conditions of their conditional use permit. Matters like the car alarms, I believe, is not actually a CUP condition, but a nuisance that we do work with the ownership on. We are planning in September to come back to the Planning Commission, as we indicated we would, with a full report. There were a number of issues that we indicated that we would be monitoring and trying to work with the ownership group to make sure that they successfully and consistently comply with. So we will be coming back with a report, a formal report, in September.
Thank you.
Thank you. One other question.
Of course.
I do not recall, at least recently, if not perhaps for some time, any business who has been non-compliant for so long a time and used up so much staff resources to relatively little avail. So my question is, is there some reason I should not ask the staff to prepare a document for consideration on the agenda as a revocation of permit?
I think at this point, again, going through the chair, we have indicated that we would monitor for a period of time and report back to you in September. I think when we complete that monitoring period and come back to you with a report, that would be a more appropriate time to consider, perhaps, based on that information, if that's a direction that the commission would be interested in pursuing.
Okay, just as a point of information, I don't like this whole process. I'm used to the idea where Santa Bruno businesses read their requirements of permit, comply with them, and that's it. And it's rare that there's something that goes on for a month or two, let alone for months. So when I ask some questions about this and I hear that the non-compliance is in an unfriendly manner, in other words, not complying and being unfriendly about it to the neighbors, I find that to be concerning. So I offer that as something that the staff might look into. Is there a problem in this process that has caused the business owner to be out of sympathy with meeting the permit requirements? I don't know the answer. I'm just throwing it out there.
Thank you. We will continue to work with the ownership group and try to, you know, work with the ownership group and the neighbors to resolve those issues. And we'll have a full report in September.
Thanks very much. Thank you for your patience.
Sure.
Anything else under Planning Commission discussion? Seeing none, we stand adjourned. Our next meeting, sorry, I should have done that before I gavelled. Our next meeting will be held on August 15 at 7 o'clock in the senior center. Thank you and good night.